Alright, so six o'clock, we're gonna call this workshop to order. Uh, everybody stand and do the white suit. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Councillor Rockwell?
Here.
Councillor Claybus?
Here.
Councillor Pediger?
Here.
Councillor Ongarder?
Yeah.
Mayor Kiefer? Mayor's profit, or sorry, councillor profit? So we'll move on to reports correspondence and discussion. Um, first topic of discussion is the mailbox discussion.
Alright, so the basic concept is how you want to move forward with the mailboxes.
As far as like?
As far as several of them throughout the city that they're in, you know, they're in the sidewalk. We need to move. Correct.
Are you talking about where to start first, or?
No, just debate, so right now, we're, we're doing, um, we approved the bid for Wilson and Taylor, so that side, that sidewalk improvement is gonna be starting soon. I believe there is one set of mailboxes on Wilson and another on Taylor that are gonna have to be relocated. And in this, the, the concept has been, do we do the CBUs? So is it that as we're going and upgrading sidewalks, that we're just gonna replace them? And people were gonna put CBUs in their place? People can say, hey, I'm gonna do a CBU, or I can keep having a PTO box at the post office. It's kind of bad idea, but.
So if we do the, what are they called, CBUs?
C- CB.
CBUs, so are, do we purchase those through the post office? If they manage them, or, or uh, do we, or does, or do we have to do it? And we give them the key and so on so forth?
Yeah.
Is it gonna make, is it gonna make the post offices, but?
If, if, yes, it could be. I, I talked to the postmaster, when she was okay with, but yes, it would be a loss of revenue if someone chose to do a CBU instead of keeping their post office box.
So if you do the CBU, obviously it would be in a group or whatever, and so maybe we look at at the same time, it's, they're not happening, this thing stops, so maybe they'll cut out his loss too.
Correct.
As long as time.
Yeah, of course, they, yeah, they appreciate it, and having the uniform, maybe they go, we, we go and purchase them, and there's a place to go and buy them. Um, I think, right, there's like brown and gray um, throughout the city, that will be made, maybe maintained, tan ones, there's like a little.
And I think, well, we just delivered, it's tan, we put it in that big paper, but he used to, they have a marshmallows, a whole liter, I think, we, there was a couple over there. We only use that, we never have any mailboxes.
And so, and right now, in any new housing development, they are, they have, they are required to do CBUs, so.
So, the part of the ones that are in the sidewalks, so you know, the CBUs, a lot of times are practically in the sidewalk.
Yeah, they, yeah, you would have to do something outside, correct?
So here we are, saying, oh, you can't have something in the sidewalk, but oh, the city can put something there.
It would be, correct, it would be outside, where you're still gonna have the AD accessibility. And if you moved the mailboxes, then you would have to require them to, to again, put that in on your side, yeah. Okay, so it is, it's like, that, I guess that's the discussion, do we say, hey, as a city, we wanna do uniformity, we want all CBUs? Or we're saying, if you choose to do a mailbox, you have to do it on your own regard? And it would have to be, the mailbox has to be on the, on the corner, on the edge, right?
So the, so if it's a true mailbox, it has to be at the edge of the, and so the, the sidewalk would have to bump out behind that, still need to fight what requirement.
Yeah, and, and do we want homeowners to be responsible for doing that? And how are we gonna maintain it?
If you don't wanna bump out, then, I can tell you that, you know. They can bump out their own yard, yeah, so the sidewalk would stay straight.
Really, probably what we're talking about is people that have, who live in older neighborhoods, have older homes, or whatever. The newer developments, that's just gonna be the standard.
That is, yes, yes.
So like, when we live, we have mailboxes, but I don't think anybody uses them, because every, just 'cause of where they're at, they're way down on the corner, and I don't think anybody uses our mailboxes.
And, and I did ask Lana about that, if there were any dead mailboxes, and she, she said there were very few. So the majority of them are being used, you mean post office boxes, that, the post office?
No, no, uh, it's mailboxes.
Yeah, majority of the mailboxes are, are being used.
I know when we moved, they told us that they would not deliver mail there, and that we needed to get a post office. And so, and we did, because it was, it was easier not waiting in the waste, because it was in terrible shape and or like.
I would prefer, you know, um, I don't actually care, like, a couple. Like, if we had some gray ones, because they, tan was backed up, or something like, I'm sure.
Or we should wait until they're all tan, but I didn't.
Well.
I think that's my idea.
I just wanted to just say, stop telling me how it used to be. But you know, there was a move, trying to get URC to allow us to paint their vaults, you know, all the green vaults along, so that they would be, uh, and they won't let you. Uh, or at that time, they wouldn't, and so I think it's important to have a continuity of, if you wanna have a theme, at one time, we wanted to have a theme of how our town looked, and had plans on, this is what, you know, I mean, in the beginning, it was all that Spanish, you see, that's why everybody had the tile walls, you know. And then for something different, but so I think it should, I think we should set a standard, then, if we're gonna follow that way, you know, you don't decide.
This is just what the color will be, this is what the look, this is how they're gonna be placed, and this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, do you wanna go to to, like, so we're gonna go to CBU as, as, and, and there's a couple ways of doing it. We don't have to do anything until we go and upgrade the sidewalk. So that, I mean, we're talking, you know, years and years and years in the future, unless, you know, we get this windfall of money, and everyone's like, hey, we wanna redo all the sidewalks.
Or, so this will be down the road, not like immediately?
Well, we would be starting now, with.
Going forward.
Yes.
Wilson, Taylor.
Because, yes, because of the sidewalk project we have now, it was just or we do it before, yeah. Correct, that is another.
Yeah, so then, you just don't have the option.
No, and yes, to go, and we would just change out all the mailboxes and go and start installing CBUs before we do the sidewalks, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so what are the neighborhoods that are gonna be the most affected? Probably Columbia, Bourbon Avenue, I guess, so?
They're everywhere.
They're everywhere?
They are.
As far as the biggest neighborhoods, probably uh, south, what is it, southwest Columbia, northwest, and southwest, or uh, or northeast and southeast, uh, Bourbon Avenue, because those are two of the old, older neighborhoods, Adams, Hood, those are gonna be some that are affected, because I think everybody's got mailboxes down there too. Unless it's some of those empty lots that became houses, so they're all on, you know. So, yeah, it's, it's probably gonna affect a few people. Some of the empty catwalks from somebody.
Oh, same, and, and again.
I just walk to this now, or whatever, you know.
Correct, correct, and yes, it, it may be, so that is the option of saying and, yeah, that's.
In our neighborhood, we have to walk anyway, because there are improvements of three and four.
Correct, so. A- again, right now, it is as simple as, I, I really do think it's, there's a couple on Wilson and a couple of, okay, right, Amanda, she, is that right?
There's more than that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, but right where we're going.
So if they are in bundles or whatever, I assume that we would try to put those CBUs in the same exact locations, so maybe it won't be as bad, if you're already having to walk to your mailbox, ready? The CD is not gonna be a bundle of three, the CD is gonna be a bundle of seven, or eighteen, or twenty. So it's gonna be in this location, it's not gonna be three or. I think some of the bundles are what, like, maybe six mailboxes, or something like that.
And I think it comes in bundles of twelve.
Maybe a different size.
I think there's a safety factor too, with the CB, I think they're safer, I think more people, I mean.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about somebody older.
Yeah. Kids aren't out there, you know.
They're raising my mailbox, so I had to get a lot of fun.
Well, and I think, and I think those CBUs can be designed that they have the, you can get boxes in them?
Bigger.
Bigger boxes, and so maybe people would be able to do that too, versus having it delivered just on the front porch. The amount of boxes that go out, and that is, I mean, that's probably be a little point too, yeah, I mean, you're gonna have one house, it's gonna get larger, and then everybody else is gonna be putting on a porch, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just with the amount of boxes that we have every time.
Some of the CBUs can come with, uh, um, you can get them to have more parcel boxes.
But, okay, but still, it's gonna be like, four, five, or you might as well, or like, we're for forty houses.
Well, don't you think they would probably just put one of those tickets in your mailboxes and tell you to go up to the post office and get your key out of one of those?
Well, I think. Well, they can, or they deliver it to your house.
Yeah.
Whereas like, right now, they just deliver it to our house. For whatever it comes to, post office, but, uh, I don't know, I mean, they're just gonna keep you, keep you uniform, in this city, go put out
and then.
CBUs, that's what I thought.
Okay, and, and again, it, it's very small right now, and then see how it goes, but this would be the, like a trial, on this first one?
I think, I think it'd be better than everybody going out, protecting all of their sidewalks.
Correct, yes.
Throughout the whole city.
Okay, uh, the next one is the charter, and I really don't, unless anyone has anything specific on the charter, it's on the, in the electronic. So, the charter's in your electronic form. Yeah, the, the one thing that was, um, was discussed was attendance, that was brought up, and I contacted the LOC attorney, and what she responded is that she does not generally see any uh, counselor attendance in the charter, but it does mention it in council rules. So, so it's not necessarily in charter, it's in council rules, so that would be muted. And the other concept that we had been talking about was in section twenty-nine with the felony. Um, and some examples were like, so again, this is, if someone is a current counselor, and something were to happen, what would cause a vacancy? And it, it could be a conviction of a felony, um, conviction of a felony, other offense pertaining to his office, or unlawful destruction of public records, so that's a little more, which you guys didn't necessarily want. Uh, conviction of public offense punishable by loss of liberty, that was interesting. Uh, conviction of any felony or crime relating to performance of council duties. So I know we just hadn't solidified that, that was.
I know, like the last one, we kind of all, more or less came together to felony.
And, okay.
Because, and this was, I mean, it was gonna be two on the, yeah.
And so, do you guys want it, so on five?
So when I sent you that information, and that was your run, correct, that was to, wasn't, what that says, is if you're going to be on the line?
Correct.
To be appointed to a committee?
Correct.
So, but you could put it here.
Yeah, yes, you could, I, I mean, yes, the same thing. Which is the conviction of a felony.
That I can have one DUI instead of here.
Yes, that's what you said, that's right.
Okay, so I wanna start drinking.
So yeah, is there any, yes, is there like, have something about DUIs on there, what's a DUI?
I don't remember the term.
Gee, that's it? What's a DUI, like, what is the classification?
It's a mystery, but it can, if you get enough, then that's very, very.
Okay, so, so again, is that, do you wanna go that route, again, you start opening?
I think it's just a possibility, I think it's gonna be too broad, and like she said, and, so you're you know what I mean, like, you're just gonna be overthinking.
So conviction of a felony crime, yeah, okay. Cool, and did anyone see anything else, we are ready, this needs to go to vote, or it needs to be first August?
Twenty-seven.
So next council meeting, we will see a finalized draft in the actual.
Four years, I think.
Whatever, yeah. Okay, um, the next one is business license, so we did our open meeting. Uh, we had three community members, we had three staff, two counselors, and two county members. Um, the input that we got from business licenses was, uh, does this affect booster clubs? Will they have to do this, that was something brought up. What about the ice cream truck, because, uh, what about the ice cream truck?
We need to verify that we can allow it in residential areas.
Correct, the ice cream truck. Um, something about nonprofit organizations, and then gun business in home, that was also brought up. So. Yeah.
Because, you gotta go get a special license, and so I know there are some that you, uh, or have a little bit, well, probably not seen.
So is there anything that, again, just like discussion, as you guys have read this, any, any thoughts?
This is gonna be an annual fee?
Annual fee, yeah.
And we agreed on the cost, twenty-five dollars, I think is what I heard.
You guys passed that prior?
Last year, and, and honestly, there probably needs to be some reevaluation of that, because we've added something that are a little bit different than what we initially anticipated.
So, so as far as like the cost, what we should charge is, I don't know, you're talking?
Right, and like, we didn't have, we added a couple of categories to what we've been originally talking about. So special events, um, the taxi, the Ubers, um, and we may wanna look at a cost structure for those.
So, so is this, so it's on the businesses, um, size of business, doesn't matter? Nope.
That wasn't initially considered, but that would be certainly something that could, you could change in the main structure.
Okay, and then, is it any business within the city, so like, any business within city limits, is that what we're talking about?
That's the intent, yes.
So commercial?
Yep.
Whatever.
Commercial, industrial, home-based, yeah.
So when you say twenty-five dollars, is reevaluated, is that, is it up, or is it down, or what?
I think it could be some of both, depending on, because the other thing we, we incorporated into total was the, the mobile vendor as well. Um, and the temporary nature of those, so again, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see a lot of going up, but I do maybe better delineation for, for one part of that, and then we can certainly look at, you know, if it's, if it's the I don't wanna say innocuous, but if it's a small home-based business, I mean, maybe that's just literally a ten dollar annual fee, and and maybe the commercial business is the one that's the twenty or the twenty-five.
Well, and we also talked about doing, uh, so for, um, like, the summer stuff, where everyone comes, you have several businesses.
You have a license or something like that.
Yeah, we've got the special events in there, which, so there's two that it might be that you would assess a fee to a primary permit holder, and then not to secondary permit holder.
Correct.
So a special event, or the contractor's license could fall into that category.
Sure.
So as far as the nonprofit, um, uh, you know, like, not just things like boosters, but I, I would think like Girl Scouts, right, like, they're, they'll be selling the requiring them to get a license. Um, but then the other thought that comes into mind as well is, there's been several times in this community where and, um, you know, food, raising, um, raising funds for food, to pay for like, your costs, or treatment for cancer, or things like that, and I don't know
you don't hold this with.
We wouldn't want to, yeah, you know, charge them a license, I guess.
Correct.
I, I would, I would add to that too, that if somebody's holding an event at the Port of Moro, we're not gonna assess a license for that, because they're, they're renting an event venue, and doing an activity in that event venue. This is more, I mean, special events is really about a special event in a public space, as opposed to like.
Like a farmer's market.
Right, we would look at a farmer's market differently than we might look at, you know, the Booster Club doing their annual booster event at the Port of Moro.
True.
What about the, the entities that have more than one business, Marcy Raddell comes to mind, she has like three. Each would be required, because they are in a different location. It's as much about knowing what's happening and where, as it is about knowing who's doing what.
And again, this is like, the whole point, like, this is the discussion, like, exactly, you know what I mean? So this, yeah, these are you guys guiding the.
So each location, so I would say in that scenario, um, you know, maybe the individual would not be happy about being charged three.
Yeah, there should be a discount on the second.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's, that's a good point, too. Um, but, I, yeah, I don't know, I only have one, so.
Right. Ethan?
Not sure. And there's a lot of different sections in there, but it's just kind of a lot, a lot of stuff for having a business, that, that's my guilt too, is kind of like.
Speaking from, we pay a lot already.
Right, I mean, you just want, like, I don't know, my thought is like, wanna know what you're gonna be, who you are, what it's about, like, that's what we should require. Everything else is regulated by somebody else.
Exactly.
Because the city needs a regulator on top of that.
Well, when I know when we, when we first started thinking about this, like a long time ago, it was a two-page thing, it was not that many pages, all we wanted to know was where you were at, and what kind of, we, we wanted you to come to City Hall, to the police guys, and say, you know, we're gonna be working, doing this, just like a prayer permit, I mean, it shouldn't be any more difficult than that.
So were you, was this not even with existing businesses then, this is more of like?
No, it was existing, because, you know, it's just like the fire marshal sends you a paintball below every year, wants to know how much is settled in oxygen, and blah, 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 yeah. They know all the businesses, they think, that have those kind of hazardous wastes, things in their buildings. This is, this is, now, like you say, another document to, to be ahead of, and if you looked at penalties, because we looked at penalties, because you know, penalty has all the roundup things, and theirs was longer than two pages, but it was, you know, like you say, if you were there for the roundup, you you paid like ten dollars, or twenty dollars, or whatever, I mean, it wasn't a huge fee, I should have kept that, but, but it's, yeah.
Okay, so.
Another thought that I had, because I have two businesses, Marcy has three businesses, instead of charging, her business may be charged by business owner, one fee, list all of their businesses open.
So what, what's the fee for? It's just a formality, I think. What does it go to?
Yes, we go to the cost of.
Doing the paperwork.
Again, again, not to make any money, you know.
Because they compared, originally when this came up, we compared it to, say, like, Kermitson, I think Kermitson charges, what, five hundred bucks? Something, something like that.
I don't think they would. I don't hire, I know.
Yeah, I know it's pretty expensive.
I know that.
And so, and you, I think Heather was the one that brought up the comment about, you know, like, we're already heavily like, we already got by licenses, and I can only speak for myself, but everything I sell, I'd have to buy another license, and then I'm already regulated by the state legislature on top of that.
Yeah.
And then, you know, and then I have to pay it to that, you know, so I, I mean, I did that side of it too.
But for the safety of your community, is twenty-five dollars a a no deal, I guess, is what the conversation should be.
I think, or something with a six.
I just think it needs to be simpler.
I agree, with simpler.
That's probably.
So, okay, so, so guiding, guiding in simplicity, so, so you're looking at
just do a flat twenty-five dollars per business owner, they list all of the businesses, and you're wanting a location.
I mean, and again, you're looking for, so flat rate, you're looking for, um, like, just a basic who you are, what you're doing, idea.
That's really all we wanna know.
Because it's the, it's the traveling guy that you were wanting to know. And we used to have people, traveling guys come to City Hall, wanting to buy their permit, and we said, well, we don't have, you don't have to. And they go, oh, okay. And a couple of them out here made you think, hmm, we should know you before you're.
Like the guy that shows up with the big white bus with fish?
Yeah. Well, and, and when you're just knocking on doors at eight-thirty at night, you should not be there. You know what I'm saying, you shouldn't come knock on my door at eight-thirty at night, and have me say, you know, we might oughta leave town now, because I'm the city manager.
Okay, and he said, oh, okay.
Um, and, um, I think originally, when we were, we were talking about this, um, the other day, part of it was there just seemed to be an increase in pop-ups, um, that were happening, and we didn't know very much about them. And so location was a safety issue, there's, um, questions about just regulation, um, and so I think that that would help to get more information.
So, within, within who you are, and like, are you doing, do you wanna have, go to the, the, down the road, uh, you need a food handlers permit, I mean, show us that kind of stuff, or no?
Because not all of them are food, yeah.
For the people that are selling food, I think really, the, the thing that we see the most of is the pop-up of food.
Yeah, but I, I think that you should almost
if you get this information, just shoot it into the health department.
Well, the only thing is like, reliability of, like, hey, you guys gave them permit to work in, I mean, just so it doesn't bounce back, like, that's the only thing.
And we.
Show us the food permit.
Yeah, and well, or even just a business license that you have in the.
There, see, I was just gonna say, that maybe we would ask for their business license, and have that put down.
Oh, okay.
You know what I'm saying, so if there was ever any kind of a conversation about.
Yeah, and is that, what is that called?
If it's, if it's a license to the secretary of state, either, um, ID number.
Yeah, they would have a number, like, if they went after anything, all those.
Okay, so, um, yeah, Paul's on. Are you here in this one?
Yeah, Mary Cooper.
He's commented.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was saying too, just do flat twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have.
Perfect.
Thank you, Paul.
Just play license. Okay, so simplistic, sorry.
I'm sorry. Wouldn't that impact though, for the ones that do the special events? Like the Fourth of July vendors, if they don't already have a business, and they just do it for that one event, wouldn't that?
So we need to have something for special events?
Wouldn't, I don't know, but here's what I recall, because I used to do the vendors at the Fourth of July, and what, when they came, I made that, I had a forum, and they had to prove that, they had to attach their insurance.
Yeah.
And that was always a big deal, because most of them at that time, and we're talking way too long ago. But anyway, so they would go get one from their homeowners or something. And their food handles, that's, that's, and, and it was, and, and actually, they didn't have to do their food handlers, what I said to them is you'll need to post your food handlers certificates in your booth.
But there's one other step to that, the health department requires a temporary, um, license. And you have to pay for it, it's eighty-five dollars to set up.
See, that was way, I was doing it way too long, so.
The temporary ones.
So with these special events, I think we talked about, that could just go to one, like, oh, I heard doing this.
Hosting.
Yeah, yeah. Hosting, thank you, hosting.
Yeah. Because you don't wanna make it difficult, and if somebody you know, it's, it's like getting coaches. Oh, you hope that all the coaches you get are not, you don't have one that's molesting kids.
But they're all background checks.
I mean, that's just the law and the law.
So, so, so simplicity.
You're too long.
So simplicity, the guidance is a flat rate, not to exceed, correct, not to exceed. Okay, not to exceed, who you are, what are you doing, uh, have some kind of displaying license from the Secretary of State, and then look at like a hosting entity's special events, is there anything else that stands out?
And still, that would just be twenty-five dollars, flat rate, period.
Correct, correct. Yep. But yeah, is there anything else that stands out from it?
I know we talked about the pop-up, donation one, and stuff like that, it's probably not too much.
Well, I think that's what we're saying, it's like, everyone who's gonna come, we would use nothing coming. Their permit, whether it's for the year, right? If they pop up several times, they they have the license that covers.
License for fundraisers.
For fundraisers, you know, like kids.
Lot of families, so.
Fundraisers or whatever.
Oh, you wanna ask something like that? Well, I think this is gonna be like pretty. So.
But the, like I said, naturally, most of what we're talking about is probably food, remember pop up food vendors out of homes and stuff like that, or we for this license, is that gonna trigger the food handlers part of it? Yeah, a lot of people are required to have, but maybe if you're just cooking out of your own.
Okay, so you know, I saw, like, are we talking everything?
Now, what's food handlers is one, like twenty five, like, it's pretty cheap.
I think.
And you can do it all along the lines. But I know even the booster club has to do it, you know, or we do an event for our sports or whatever, we have to do it.
So correct, so so are we worried about the home businesses or are we mainly worried about people who don't? That's it. So are we saying all businesses? So is that gonna include all businesses? Where do you wanna draw the line?
There's a lot of home businesses, um, we'll just use I don't know, Avon, we'll say Avon and Avon representative. Are we gonna require them to have a license?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Somebody selling pan for chef or?
Yeah, I don't for me things though, because that's not regulated by the state, honestly.
So we would, we need to define a business.
Yes, it's a business that's not like.
And I'm sure it's business, not the first time this conversation has come up somewhere, so I'm sure you can find the information.
Define business.
Specifically about that.
Not to include.
So home based businesses are currently regulated in the development code, just so that you're aware.
But does that include somebody that's selling?
Pan for chef.
Pan for chef, Avon.
Technically it would.
It would, okay.
Technically it would, yep.
And that'd be in there, in the development code, they have your business license?
No, but they are regulated, they are required.
So they have the rules already?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're.
It doesn't require a permit, but it requires they need certain, there are certain standards.
No sign. Can't have this many guests during the day, can't have any guests after this time.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yep.
Okay, okay. So a good direction for now, we'll come back, okay? Um, next one is the shipping ordinance. I just have the chicken basket in my hand. Okay, so in here, the one things that were brought up is the request was to have more clarity uh, on run and spacing in yard. Uh, they wanted clarity on coop. Uh, on the eggs, one on pitch eight, line one sixty nine. They wanted uh interest of selling, that was something that was brought up, right? They were interested in selling them?
Right, so um, there was, yeah, there was interest in selling the eggs.
Okay.
There was also an interest in being able to um slaughter the chickens.
Yes, and yes, indeed.
Or.
Yep, for killing. And that. Those are, those are my notes that I had, so same. Was there anything that stood out to you guys on this?
I think.
Concerns.
Did you change the number of, she asked from six now to like four? Do you know? No, we don't make any change.
By changing, by maximum, hence allow you to six.
Yeah, I changed six a lot. I think Emerson's is even on four.
Have we, have we discussed how much this is gonna cost if we?
No, we have not.
Is that a good time now?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't.
Want to service and try to.
Like the cost.
But I mean, I think the question would be, could there be a permitting fee? I mean, we, we, we charge to license dogs, we allow chickens, do you wanna charge for the license for chicken? And and I'm not subjecting them for buying egg, I'm just.
Well, I think, I think.
Take the cost of the dogs out. Now, last one we did.
No, he's still there.
For for licensing them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would think that you would, you would want to charge something for chickens because unless you're eating dogs and cats, you're consuming many chicken eggs and possibly chickens themselves, so it is different. That's I guess what I mean.
So review, uh.
Some kind of fees for that, I would get a, because.
There will be enforcement costs associated with this as well. Yeah.
That, that was, sorry, that was one more thing that was brought up, a process for picking up chickens, like it wasn't as defined, right?
I'm sorry.
Did a process for picking up the chickens?
Yeah, I mean, uh, we wouldn't have a way, we don't have a defined way yet that we would, from a court enforcement perspective, figure out how we pick up a chicken and figure out who it belongs to and where, put it when we don't know. But I, that creates a whole nother level of stuff we haven't really thought through yet.
Yeah, and and I guess it ultimately comes down to, is there any hesitancy with this? I mean, before we go further, is it like, no? We like the idea, we should proceed forward, let's get more, more clarity?
I think I mean, what's, again, like other issues, what's the harm in at least trying? We can always come back and change it or just say, you know what, this didn't work. You know, whatever, you know, this is something new, it's not like we've ever done this before, this is new, so, um.
I, I hesitate on slaughtering, I don't think I would, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so like as a, as a means of slaughters and buying chickens, just originally slaughtered.
That was the request, was to be able to buy them, to raise them.
Just for slaughter.
Correct.
That was the request.
Or I would think that if you're gonna do something like that, you would probably need a processing, but if they're like, um.
If they're the end of this whole line, obviously you're gonna have to slaughter them one way or, yeah.
But that's not.
And and you really didn't, yeah, I think it would clarify, if, how did it say that you could, wouldn't it say it could euthanize, was that the?
I think euthanize was, that was Chinese.
And I, and the way they described it was.
So on page eight of that particular section, um, line one seventy one, hopefully may not, it's currently raised, hopefully may not be slaughtered or killed except pursuant to the law or of a state or county public official, nor for the purposes of euthanasia, in other words, at the end of their useful life.
Now, but it doesn't show how you would do that.
No.
So.
Right, I mean, I mean.
So, yeah, it would be a manner of leaving that concept in there, right?
Okay, um. You're looking at more of a safety standard or safety side of it?
For you.
Uh, this is maybe fifty, one fifty nine, line one fifty nine.
Okay.
Uh, repeats, probably not enough.
Setback.
Yeah, from a house or building, you're probably gonna be looking more excited than you.
Paul did comment, who says he's forced chicken policy, just as long as we don't wrestle these chickens.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, three feet, nine, okay?
Yeah, I would go more to seven, ten feet.
Seven to ten feet from the middle?
Yeah, because, yeah, he answers stuff, I know, like, get on fire. So.
Maybe like that, so.
And they're pretty high wattage too.
Okay. Is there, is there anything else that stands out on this particular, so a process for picking up chickens, ask a permit cost. Um, not interested in the killing process.
If I wanted to be in the devil's head, please do. Can I say that since we had no public comment in favor of this, when we had the open meeting, we should ignore the whole thing?
Oh, not do it?
Yeah.
And did we have anybody against it?
Nobody came. So we had.
And let's go forward.
Well, we did have, we did have a city meeting where they came and they were in favor of it. Um, what was that back? It was last year or something like that. They came, they came and spoke in public or whatever, yeah, there was kids, they came and spoke, so, yeah, so that was it.
I was just giving you the opportunity.
Uh, on the pickup and stuff like that. I'm sure there's.
Yeah.
Farmers out there, or people raised chickens, scrambling.
Yeah.
Love to have free chickens.
No, and that was, I mean, yeah, we just need to find it and then define it and place it. But other than that, I guess we're gonna move forward and we can at least get more defining, right?
Needed that?
Yeah.
That's what we have, the management. For work and stuff, yeah.
Okay, and then with the business license, simplicity, okay, we have some direction there.
And just, just for clarity on the business license, so we talked about, it wasn't twenty five dollars per person.
No, it was not.
It's just an umbrella, twenty five dollars covering all.
Yep. Uh, the last thing is just looking for some direction on the shipping containers. We kind of left that as the, from what I understand, how it was left with city council. Um, you know, looking at options, wanting to hear, you know, the last, we wanted to hear from the business side, but I thought it was pretty clear that no, we don't want shipping containers within the residence. Am I, I understand that correctly?
I don't want shipping containers like in the backyard as you storage.
Okay, and that's, yes, I think that's what.
I think that's what.
That's kind of what we're talking about.
Like, we didn't feel comfortable with the residential side of the thing. Again, I'm always speaking for myself, but that's what I remember.
So don't say residential side, because once again, like they said the other night, you're kind of eliminating their thought of.
Oh, like a house.
Right, we don't want it in their backyard, just storage containers.
Okay.
Right, so kind of need to define that.
Okay.
Make sure that's kind of separated out.
So if I wanna put it in my backyard for my mother.
What's that?
If I wanna put it in my backyard for my mother, then I, then I care.
Cause I mean, there's.
What are your?
There's probably for an A T U.
Well, yeah, we got the piece, no, yeah, but I'm not like. Okay, so what it was brought to us, I thought, was storage container objective. That's what we, we were talking about that.
That was the original request.
Right, storage containers in the backyard.
And then they came and wanted to make a coffee shop.
With the thought that we said no storage containers at all. Right, but now we're, what is it like commercial, having storage containers? You can build a building out of storage containers. And as far as I know, it's asked for part of their guidance on that, stuff like that, but you don't want forty foot shipping container in somebody's backyard and right up against your fence.
Correct, so that's what I'm.
Yeah.
No, I agree.
But like, on the residential side, if down the road, they're gonna end up building houses out of storage containers. They find a way to do it, go have let's look at it, right? But storage containers in the backyard, not so great, in my thought.
Okay.
But I think along those lines, we can have a clear, like, this is what we're agreeing to, and this is what we're not gonna be okay with for the time being, and it doesn't mean that can't come back and change that down the road, because we don't have anything. Right, and that is my understanding, this is new, we have no, no anything, and so we can develop it from scratch or whatever, and then we can always just like anything add to it, subtract from it, whatever, okay, down the road. I think I would, I think from the residential side, the commercial application. Well, I think I said from the beginning that I'm okay with that, just because there are commercial applications, like I've seen freezers made out of can storage containers, you know, because it makes sense, you know, um, the high school uses them for storing all of their football equipment and the various other things. So, um, that part makes sense as well, so.
I think the piece that we all were wanting was just more information about the um, you know, like the building codes and like what other towns have been doing, because we have seen that other towns have started to use those for commercial purposes and things like that, just what is the, you know, like for us to be able to see those things. Um, I think that we all.
Okay, so we will look, we can move forward with giving some specific parameters.
So I, is my clarification, you're really looking for a staff level presentation of how shipping containers are being deployed out there in the building world for a variety of applications. And in turn, we don't wanna see shipping containers in somebody's backyard as a storage container. But when we had the first discussion, you were okay with shipping containers on commercial industrial property for storage, as long as we can get them to paint them and, and we'll get them fitted.
Don't go into.
Okay, I, 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 I can move forward with that.
All right. Good. Okay, um. Any, anything else for, that's all I.
So, um, I'm gonna join this meeting at six fifteen.